All right, we're gonna get started. I will call to order the City of Milton County Council Meeting this Tuesday, October 21st at 6:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Hometown East Hardware.
Thank you. Approval of agenda.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We have one person signed in. You can speak now if you wish, or wait till that agenda item's called.
I'll wait.
Okay, sounds good. Number five, approval of consent agenda.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Agenda item six, presentation, discussion, and possible action by nonprofit 2026 budget requests.
We have our 2026 nonprofit budget request here tonight. We have the Badger Court Hawks Chorus Guild, Milton Historical Society, and the Milton Youth Try. As noted in the last council meeting, the Historic Society automatically gets the $10,000, but they may request more from your tier as well. So this would be in addition. So if Badger Court, we'll go weird. They're on the agenda in alphabetical order, so we'll just go in alphabetical order. So if the Badger Court Hawks Chorus Guild would like to go first.
Please, yep, and we will limit these to 10 minutes.
I've timed it pretty well, I think, I hope.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Christopher Smith. I am the Executive Music Director of the Badger Court Hawks Chorus, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our organization and hundreds of Rock County residents who have found meaning, unity, and pride through our annual patriotic concert. This evening, I'm asking for your consideration of a $5,000 contribution from the City of Milton, an investment in an event that not only brings people together, but uplifts our veterans, strengthens our community identity, and shines a positive spotlight on the City of Milton. The patriotic concert is more than just a performance. It's a mission-driven community event with three simple goals: to bring people together, to reignite our shared patriotism through the power of music, and to raise money for our local heroes, the veterans who have given so much for our freedom. In 2025, the Badger Court Hawks presented nine concerts across five Rock County communities, including three in Milton. Those performances alone drew well over 2,000 attendees, setting a new record. Together, they also raised $20,500 for veterans' causes, with $20,000 donated to Rock County Veterans Services and $500 to Vets Roll. Since its founding in 2019, this series has now contributed more than $67,000 to organizations supporting veterans and their families. That's not just music, that's impact. While the concert travels throughout Rock County, Milton plays a special and leading role. It has been the anchor city for our performances, and with your support, it will continue to be the home for two major performances at Milton High School Auditorium. These events bring hundreds of visitors into Milton: families, veterans, seniors, and young people who dine in our restaurants, visit our businesses, and leave with a renewed sense of pride in this community. Last year alone, our local advertising and partnerships reached over 500,000 people through media and social outreach, including coverage in the Milton Courier, other local newspapers, local radio, NWT, TVO, Channel 17. When people hear the patriotic concert, they associate it with Milton. That's the kind of positive visibility cities strive for, and it's happening right here. The city's comprehensive plan calls for Milton to "become a destination," a community that celebrates its history, honors its people, and draws visitors through culture and events. The city's strategic plan highlights the need for "diverse opportunities for fun and lifelong learning and for fostering a 'safe, inclusive, welcoming community.'" The patriotic concert does just that. It's free and open to everyone, it honors service, unites families, celebrates diversity through song, and makes Milton a gathering place for joy and reflection. Even the Goodrich Square and Junction Square master plans, while focused on specific districts, share the same goal: strengthening Milton's cultural identity through community events. Our concerts echo that mission, driving civic pride and downtown traffic that ripple far beyond the auditorium doors. The Court Hawks' own strategic plan for 2025 through 2028 is built around six pillars, and this project fulfills nearly all of them. I believe you have a copy of our community plan, our strategic plan there. Under community engagement and impact, our goal is to grow attendance by 15% and raise $25,000 annually for veterans by 2027. The Milton performances are the cornerstone of that growth. Under financial sustainability, we are launching the Patriot Level Sponsorship Program, a tiered structure that invites civic and business partners to invest in the concert's longevity. And under artistic growth and excellence, we continue to push musical innovation, combining barbershop, classical, and contemporary styles that reflect the diversity of our community. This is not a one-off event. It's a strategic, data-driven, and mission-aligned program, one that balances artistry with measurable community return. A $5,000 investment from the City of Milton will help us cover production costs, including venue rental, sound and lighting, print and marketing, allowing us to keep the event completely free to the public. It will amplify the city's visibility in promotional materials seen by thousands of attendees and hundreds of thousands of viewers online and in media. It will support local veterans' causes with every dollar of profit donated directly. It will stimulate local business activity as attendees dine, shop, and explore the community around concert events. And perhaps most importantly, it will strengthen Milton's reputation as a city that values culture, service, and unity. Put simply, a $5,000 contribution from the City of Milton will generate 10 times that value in community impact. Statistics are important, but what moves people are stories. An audience member at last year's Milton concert said afterwards, "I've been to concerts all over the United States, and this is one of the best I've ever seen." Another stated, "You successfully replenished my personal patriotism, which I feel has been sorely lacking as of late." That's what this is about: restoring something deeply needed in today's world: hope, pride, and connection. Looking ahead, we plan to deepen our partnerships with local governments and veterans' organizations, expand outreach to youth, and enhance visibility through new marketing and community collaborations. Our long-term goal is simple: to make Milton synonymous with the patriotic concert, the same way people associate Sun Prairie with flags of freedom or Hometown Days is associated with Verona. Your support tonight will help cement that legacy, ensuring that this concert continues to bring joy, purpose, and unity to the heart of Milton for generations to come. In closing, I want to emphasize that this is not just an ask, it's an invitation. An invitation for the City of Milton to partner in something that already works, already inspires, and already uplifts. On behalf of the Badger Court Hawks Chorus, I thank you for your time, your stewardship, and your continued investment in the arts, our veterans, and our community. Together, we can continue to unite community, honor service, and celebrate freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone, any council have any questions?
I do. Hello.
Hello.
When I was looking to ensure that the patriotic concert is primarily based in Milton and serving Milton residents, I was looking at your Facebook page, and for this past year 2025, can you confirm how many concerts were held in Milton? I could only find one, but I thought there was three?
There were three concerts in Milton. Yep, we had nine total concerts, and three of them were in Milton.
Okay. I do have another question.
Yep.
So we would be giving this money to your organization?
Correct.
Would this money only be used to the patriotic concert, or?
It would be exclusively for the patriotic concerts. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Milton Historical Society's up next. In 10 minutes, please.
Are you trying to tell me something?
I just had to set it to one, so I have to send it to each of you to be fair.
All right, I'll try and keep it under 10. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I think most of you know me, but I, my name's Keaton Claus, I'm the Executive Director at the Milton House Museum. I'd first like to thank the council for deciding that the Milton House Museum is a valuable enough asset to the community to build supporting that organization into the annual budget. The City of Milton has always been a strong supporter of the museum and has long been essential to our success. Adding funding for the museum into the city budget is just another step in this long and beneficial relationship that we have, and the museum is very grateful for that. Knowing that, I am here on behalf of Milton House Museum to respectfully request an additional $10,000 in the 2026 city budget to help offset staffing costs. I'm requesting these funds to directly strengthen our efforts to grow the museum's impact within our community and beyond. February of 2025, the Milton House took a major step forward in achieving its strategic goal of becoming the premier experiential historical site for civil rights education in Wisconsin by adding two new full-time positions. These two positions were created specifically to expand the museum's capacity and reach. These two positions have already made a measurable difference in the ability of the museum to fulfill its mission. Thanks to this expanded team, the museum has increased its presence within the community, participating for the first time in events such as Community Days and adding new special events for our calendar that bring history to life for community members and visitors alike. But we're hopefully not stopping there. With these new positions, the Milton House is actively working to extend our reach outside the museum's physical walls in other ways. This includes launching audio and virtual tours to make our stories accessible to those who cannot visit us in person, developing what we're calling History in a Box Kits, which are rentable boxes with historical activities for classroom use, and offering in-classroom visits where museum staff bring history directly to local students. These new initiatives are more than educational tools. They are also new revenue streams that support the museum's sustainability and relevance today and into the future. However, as you all know, staffing comes at a cost. The additional staffing is essential to building and maintaining these programs, and your support would help ensure their continued success. A $10,000 investment from the City of Milton will help offset these payroll expenses, allowing us to maintain momentum, continue expanding our reach, and most importantly, meet the community where it is: in classrooms, online, throughout Milton, and even the entire state of Wisconsin. The museum's proud to preserve Milton's history, where with your continued support, we can ensure it remains a living, growing, and accessible part of our community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Keaton, one question I have for you. Is the additional request, is this like a, you think it would be like an ongoing request? Like next year, would you need another $10,000? Or is this like a one-off type of request for this specific year?
I think ideally it would be a one-off request. Obviously, we just did these positions for this first year, so first couple of years are just getting those new revenue streams and funding up and running to keep these positions supported. Ideally, these positions will start to support themselves, and then this additional funding may not be needed for that specifically. Can't say we wouldn't ask for it for other reasons, but ideally, these will become self-sustaining positions that we would not need to ask additional funding from the city for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Milton Youth Try. And if you could please limit your presentation to 10 minutes.
Of course. Hi, my name is Ashley Conkle. I'm coming at you not as library director, but as a member of our Milton Youth Try Planning Committee. So sometime early last year, a group of community members came together to want to create the Milton Youth Try for youth in our community. So please look at the presentations, because there's some amazing I think because it's a PDF, it doesn't click through. You have to scroll. Okay, thank So we created the Milton Youth Try to aim to encourage healthy and active lifestyle among local youth, build confidence and determination in young athletes, create an inclusive community sporting event, inspire the next generation of athletes, and promote family engagement and fitness activities. That was why we wanted to create this Milton Youth Try event. So we held our first annual Milton Youth Try on June 22nd, 2005. We did not know what to expect. We wanted maybe at least 30 people, no more than like 75, because this is our first time out. But we had 55 youth participants, ages 5 through 12. It also may have been the hottest day of the year that we did this. It was very hot that day. But we had two different heats for ages 5 to 9, and then 10 to 12. That depended on how many laps they swam, laps they biked, and laps they ran. So we held that, and we had with our 55 participants, about half were from Milton, half were from Jamesville. You can go to the next one. So you can see this event brought in people from around the area, and I just want to say, the day of the event, we got a message to Facebook, somebody from Chicago wanted to come and sign up, but registration had already passed. So we feel that word about this event is getting out, and it got out pretty quickly, and we know that many people are very much looking forward to this next year's event, which is going to be on June 14th. This was a huge community effort. Besides the core group of us who got together to plan this, we reached out to many community partners. The biggest one was the Milton School District. They enthusiastically allowed us access to the pool, the track, the parking lots in Sherbrooke Park. They helped with transition setup, they provided lifeguards, and they actually advertised internally too for our event. The Department of Public Works were a huge asset too, with cones and barricades and fencing. The police department was there. They checked in that day, and Lakeside Fire and Rescue was there during the whole event as well. And of course, all of our volunteers. Milton is great with volunteers, and they showed up for our event, all on the course, helping hand out water, cheering on participants. We had great photos. All these photos are from Trainer Farm Photography or LA Photo, so we were able to document the event. Everyone came together to support the youth, and it was amazing. One of our goals with this event was to make it accessible. We, our registration cost was only $20, and that included the race experience and plus medals and a T-shirt. Average triathlon events are between $40 and $60. To make that happen, we rely on sponsorships and donations, so we can make an impact on those youth. Funding goes towards race management. Last year, we used velocity multisport and cycling. Advertising, a bunch of signs. Hopefully, you saw the signs around town. The T-shirts, the medals we needed purchased, and other race day needs. As we continue to grow, and I expect next year we're going to have more participants, we're going to need more funding to make this happen, make it run smoothly. What was great about this triathlon, we had youth who were doing it for the first time, which was awesome that they put themselves out there to try it, and youth have done it several times already. So we call this a little race, big impact. It was so amazing to see youth of all ages really put their heart into completing the race. The little kids swimming with their little floaties on was amazing. And even those seasoned triathlons who were zooming through the course, it was amazing. We had some great feedback with our end of the race survey, so you can look through those. Thanks for creating another local kid-focused opportunity that accommodates even the younger kids. It was amazing and so well planned out. Thanks for bringing a new event to our community. We had great feedback. So our long-term goals with this event is to host an annual event. We already have our next year scheduled for June 14th. Expand youth fitness participation, enhance community recreational opportunities, increase youth engagement and outdoor activities. And this is our main one. We want to raise funds to develop initiatives to remove barriers for youth participation in fitness activities, which may include equipment, mentorship, registration, training support, and other resources. So our ultimate goal is to have funding available to provide to youth to let them participate in different sporting And thank you. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your consideration and for supporting Milton's youth.
Thank you. Any questions for Ashley? You covered it all. Thank you. Wait, sorry, no.
Sorry, Ashley. I was just kind of curious, like overall, like, like, one thing I didn't see in there was like an overall budget. Like, how much did it cost to run the whole kit and caboodle, like everything?
Yeah, I believe we came out to, it was about $25,000, $2,500 to run the whole thing. That included the race management, the T-shirts, the medals.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you, if the city did support the $2,500, then you wouldn't have a need, you wouldn't be seeking sponsorships or?
We would continue to seek sponsorships in order to build up that fund to support the youth with the, supporting them with equipment, registrations, sign-up fees, and everything like that. Our hope is to provide small grants to youth for sporting opportunities.
Okay, now you're done. Thank you. So since the agenda item listed as possible action, we've just all seen this for the first time, but you could, we could make a motion to approve some or all of these, or whatever council wants, or if there's no action taken, they'll fall on the first meeting in November for actual, that's what we did and have done in the past, but we can if someone wanted to approve these now. Otherwise, no action, we'll see them at the next meeting.
I guess I would move to table this to the next meeting, just so I can have some time to get a little bit more information. I would be more comfortable doing that. I don't have, because where I don't have any issues with really anything happening here. I just, I need some time to ask some questions of some people to get some of the answers I need.
Yeah, I agree with Ken. I'll second that motion. So we have a motion and a second to table this till our first meeting in November. Is there any other discussion? Then vote. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the 2026 Annual Budget Presentation.
All right, tonight, we're gonna go through a quick budget update on where we are in the 2026 budget process. And everything's moving along well right now, and, let's see, there we go. So you've seen this slide last time, but just as a reminder, these are the four. This is how our budget is constructed, and everything starts with this. So the expenditure restraints, the state will incentivize us to financially comply with this. The levy limit, we must comply with that. And then our net new construction is the only mechanism that allows the city to increase the levy from the previous year. And then state aid is what the city gives each municipality for various aids throughout the year. What that all means for the 2026 draft budget as of right now, we will levy to the max, which is $3,923,287. As presented tonight, we do qualify for the levy limit, and we do qualify for the expenditure restraint. As of tonight, we wouldn't need a reduction to meet either one of those. Two minor changes since the last meeting. You'll see later in the agenda, we have the court attorney RFP that came through. That's a slight increase. And then the final fire department allocation, budget allocation came through. We're seeing $14,590 increase in addition to what was in the budget last meeting. Just a review of those 2026 capital items that are included in the budget. So we have funds for an SRO vehicle outfit, the XN body cameras, which is an annual placeholder in there, council chamber updates, one and a half squad cars. We do one squad car one year and two squad cars the next year on a rotating cycle, so we budget for one and a half each year so that it stays steady. We're also looking at a splash pad fence, and then the street projects will include Badger Lane and Pheasant Ridge, along with the annual preventative maintenance and seal coating. As presented tonight, were the 2026 requests for the nonprofit. In the budget currently that's presented tonight, I have a placeholder in for the Badger Court Hawks to receive $5,000, the Gathering Place to receive $10,000, the Milton Historical Society to receive $10,000, and the Milton Youth Try to receive $2,500. That's what's in the budget as of tonight, but obviously, your decisions, you can make any changes to that at the next meeting if you so choose, but those are what is in as of tonight. The goals every budget year is to have a balanced budget, stay within the levy limits, qualify for expenditure restraints, and have no reductions in service. And as of tonight, we are meeting each one of those goals. The only budget unknown as of tonight is the assessment ratio, and that impacts the calculation of the tax rate, but it does not affect any levy that the council passes. And that doesn't come out until mid to late November. For 2026, our main budget takeaway is that we're going to maintain current service levels, compensate all employees with the same wage increase, and have no change in the percentage paid on insurance premiums. Currently, the city pays 86% of health premiums. The budget qualifies for the expenditure restraint, and it qualifies for the levy limit. And just an update on the schedule, there's been no changes. The next meeting, we will have the public hearing, and then look for budget approval on November 18th.
No questions? All right, thank you. Agenda item eight, discussion and possible action regarding intersection traffic control at John Paul Road and Madison Avenue, State Highway 59.
At the May 6, 2025 meeting, the County Council directed staff to proceed with discussions regarding installing an always-stop control at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. Staff has met with WISDOT and submitted and received approval for the installation of an always-stop. Staff anticipates the cost for the installation to be approximately $3,000 to $4,000. If the council elects to proceed with the installation of the always-stop control, a motion should be made to approve the attached always-stop control approval.
Thank you. If any would like to speak in the public on this, now's your chance.
Good evening, everyone. Been here before, but thank you guys again for all your efforts, Mark. I had a hard time contacting Chris over the last couple of weeks, but he finally got back to me.
Your address, please.
Oh, Pete Petroff, 5 South John Paul Road, right on the corner. And again, thanks for your efforts, Mark. I really appreciate that. I think hopefully this goes through for the third and final reading, and then two to three weeks out, I think is...
If approved, we'd complete orders on some of the signs that we don't have in stock, Call &amp; Diggers locates, so yeah, within a couple of weeks, I would assume it would be installed.
Great, great. And I will say this, we've seen marked improvements in the speed limits. I appreciate the enforcement that the sheriff or the cops are doing. We've seen multiple people stopped, and they were probably doing 40. So again, huge difference. Linda can attest too. We sit outside, and she feeds the chipmunks, and we can watch the traffic go by every night, and it has slowed down immensely. So thanks for that, and hopefully this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the positive feedback. It's great. So any questions for Mark or a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the four-way stop at John Paul Road and Madison Avenue.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number nine, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2025-569, amending Section 70-111 concerning through streets.
Now that council has authorized installation...
Now that council has authorized installation of an all-way stop at the intersection of Madison Avenue and John Paul Road, the city ordinance revision needs to be completed, um, designating through streets. With the additional stop sign, the through, the through-street designation on, along Madison Avenue will be changed. This ordinance completes that change. Um, the ordinance was, uh, previously reviewed and the first reading completed, uh, September second and the second reading on September sixteenth. Um, so the, the last remaining step here is to, um, approve the third reading and adopt the ordinance.
Questions? Motion?
I would move to approve the third reading and adopting ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash five-sixty-nine amending section seventy dash one-eleven concerning through-street designation.
Second.
I had my mouth open, Ken.
We have a motion and a second. You took that away from Molly on the motion, but it's okay. So I have to ask, is there any further discussion on this? We'll vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Number ten, discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to the construction engineering contract for the Tidset, Tid Seven Street and Utility Improvements Project.
During construction of the Tid Seven Project, staff and city engineering firm review and locate areas of sidewalk for removal and replacement. During that, uh, work on-site to determine the areas, it was determined that the preferred outcome was to replace the entire sidewalk on the south side of Vernal Avenue. This required additional engineering work to take place to design sidewalk, driveway approaches and pedestrian ramps. And additional time is also required during construction to complete the work. Baxter and Woodman has requested an engineering amendment in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars for the additional work, and that amendment is attached.
I just wanted to go record. I did call Drager Langer today, because I had some concerns about the fact that the work has been being done. The sidewalks are ripped out, and we're just now being asked for the approval of the fourteen thousand dollars. And I understand what happened, and, but I personally just wanted to go and make sure that at least someone have a conversation that they need to get us those things in a more timely manner, instead of putting it on the back burner, because I don't feel that's appropriate. I don't like it at all, when it's, it's been going on for quite some time. Uh, we walked that, we walked it this morning, and we have to, you know, you can't get around because all the sidewalks are already torn out. All right, and some, a lot of them have already been put back in. That's how far down the road it's gotten. And to be asked now just seems inappropriate. But if there is no more discussion, then I'll just be the one to go ahead and recommend approval. I wanted to be on record saying that. Uh, of engineering amendment number one in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars to Baxter and Woodman Engineering.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-two approving a counteroffer on parcel number six dash thirteen dash two-sixty-nine.
The city's original offer to purchase was submitted on September tenth, twenty-twenty-five, followed by a seller's counteroffer, counteroffer number one, and a subsequent counteroffer number two, which has now been fully executed by both parties pending council approval. Counteroffer number two incorporates minor modifications to the original terms. The property will be conveyed as-is, where-is, and all, with all faults and defects, and without any seller representations or warranties. The agreement also grants Hull Farms the right to continue farming the property for up to five years, unless the city elects to begin development activity sooner, in which case Hull Farms will vacate the effective portions as needed with thirty days' notice. Additionally, the seller has elected to utilize a section ten-thirty-one tax-deferred exchange, with the city agreeing to reasonably cooperate in that process at no additional cost. Uh, for the fiscal impact, there are no fiscal changes to the original offer. The purchase price remains consistent with the terms previously approved, with tax increment district number nine providing funding for the acquisition. Uh, city administration recommends approval of resolution twenty-twenty-five approving a counteroffer.
Does anyone have any questions for Paul on this?
I do. Had to tell Derek before he got too, too excited. Um, I have two questions. One is the city has been making five thousand dollar, um, per-year payments for the past, past four years, and that's not being included in the, the price anymore. Why not? And where's that money?
That money is being removed from the purchase price. That is, is being applied to the purchase price.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. I must have misread that.
In counteroffer one, they asked for it to not be, that was stricken from, in counteroffer.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and are they renting the farmland or?
Uh, they are doing, um, there would be no cost involved for farming it. Um, currently, we have several parcels that we do farm for minimal amounts, um, ideally so we don't have to maintain and mow it. Um, so this is kind of a win-win for both parties.
Okay, thank you.
And again, they will vacate with thirty days' notice.
Okay.
So if I understand that right, Paul, if they're in the middle of planting season, and it's time to develop, they're plowing the crops.
That is correct. Freelands, free land.
Good question. Any other questions for Paul or a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-two approving a counteroffer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding a request for proposals for financing of the business park land purchase.
The city has approved an offer to purchase seventy-nine acres in the business park. To fund this, the city needs to borrow three million dollars. Administration anticipates providing a request for proposals to three local banks. The request for proposal, request financing for the three million dollars debt, fees associated with the issues of debt, eleven equal payments and no prepayment penalties. Request for proposal and associated loan follow the city of Milton, city of Milton's council policy number three, debt policy. Uh, since this land purchase has been funded by Tid number nine, no general fund tax levy will be used to repay this loan, will be paid solely with Tid funds and future sale of lands to businesses. Uh, Tid number nine has eleven years left, and the anticipated revenue from Tid, from the Tid and sale of property will pay for the cost of the loan. No general fund tax levy will be used. City administration recommends approving the issuance of a request for proposal for financing the business park land purchase.
Any discussion? Questions or if you'd like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the issuance of the request for proposal for financing the business park land purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding a final change order for the Northwest Street Improvements Project.
The Northwest Street Improvements Project includes asphalt pavement replacement and other miscellaneous items of work along Forest Lake Drive, Siri Drive, Woodland Drive and Ivanhoe Drive. The attached change order provides for an adjustment of final quantities to match actual work performed in the field. This attached change order provides for a decrease of one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, similar to other capital projects, uh, the expenses are funded by council related to the work. City administration recommends approving the final change order for the Northwest Street Improvements Project. Uh, the bulk of the change is a result of, um, less upgrade replacement needed. That's estimated during bidding, because we don't always know what we're gonna find, so they put an estimated amount in, so there was a substantial amount there. And driveway replacement was significantly less than was estimated as well, um, due to, partly because the sidewalk was not installed and the curb and gutter replacement was less than anticipated as well. Or, or less in the areas of the driveways, so.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the final change order for the Northwest Street Improvements Project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Number fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding agreement for legal services, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-eight.
The city's current agreement for legal services expires at the end of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the city issued a request for a proposal for municipal court attorney services, received two responses from Consignee Law Firm and Murphy Desmond. City staff reviewed both proposals, including the scope of services and associated costs. Based on the review, the proposal from Consignee Law Firm best meets the operational and legal needs of the municipal court. Staff has been very satisfied with the quality and responsiveness of legal services provided by Consignee Law Firm under the existing agreement. Uh, fiscal impact, uh, Consignee Law Firm has proposed a monthly retainer of fifty-seven hundred to cover both municipal and court-related legal services. Uh, administration recommends approval of agreement for legal services with Consignee Law Firm SC for a period of twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-eight.
Any questions on this or a motion?
Is that our, is that our current, um, retainer fee?
Our current retainer is, uh... One service the court wanted to see was an appearance by an attorney at initial appearances for the court, and, um, and that is included in this new agreement. And that, that's one of the, that's the major driver of the increase.
Got it.
Well, I would make a motion, um, to approve the city, uh, to, sorry, 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 sorry. Uh, recommend approval of legal services with Consignee Law Firm SC for twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Fifteen, general items, starting with committee reports. Who has something fun to share?
I do. Um, let me find my notes. So parks and rec met last night, um, had a full agenda, talked to the Milton Football Youth Organization about them leasing land from the city to develop some football fields and pavilion, um, for some long-term goals, so sharing that with some other youth sporting, um, organization, organizations as well. Uh, we also approved two dogway stations in two of our parks, one at Cross Ridge, um, on the northwest side, and one at North Goodrich Park, to ensure that people are picking up after their pets. And then the last item to note is we will be doing a Veterans Park cleaning before the Veterans Day event on November ninth at two P M. So, expect to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that, that up to them, so more than just a handful of us can clean up the park before Veterans Day, so that'll be awesome. Uh, anybody else? Charles? No, no?
Uh, the tourism committee met on Monday, uh, did get our third quarter report, um, did speak about some initiatives, uh, especially with a brochure and a associated QR code to associate, to, uh, identify businesses within the city that tourists would like to enjoy.
That's great. Okay, seeing none other, we'll go with staff reports. Drager Langer.
Still a lot of work going on, um, First Lane, Vernal Avenue, under construction still. Um, concrete work is progressing. Arthur Drive, the water and sewer installation is, um, almost complete. They have to make a water main connection and then, uh, do the restoration work on that project. Um, Shumway Pond was all put back together, so that's good. There's a couple of minor items there. Otherwise, uh, leaf collection is ongoing currently, and, um, just getting equipment ready for everybody's favorite time of year, for snow, so.
Thank you. Paul? No, sorry. Kelsey.
I don't have any additional updates to the budget.
You just said so much before. I thought you were done. Okay. Paul?
Uh, continued working with, uh, Kelsey and staff on the budget, uh, continuing meeting with, uh, developers on new opportunities for the city.
Jenny?
As part of the city's website subscription, there is a portion that's called a, a periodical redesign option, and the city of Milton is approaching that renewal period, and so we are taking advantage of reviewing the current, uh, design. And it's, so we are, it is scheduled to begin in November. The process takes approximately six to eight months. Um, the city has not received any criticism, we'll say, or improvements recommended at this time. So we are going to take the option, though, to look at the layouts, look at different communities, what they're doing, and any additional new design features that the, our website host does offer. Um, so we are looking for any input from, whether it be staff, the community, or this, uh, or the council, um, that we can put into that process. And then, and beginning in two thousand twenty-six, we're going to be using Badger Books, also known as e-poll books, and the electronic poll books will replace the traditional paper poll books that we're currently using during voter check-in. While they're designed to improve efficiency, uh, there is some stress, excuse me, training for staff and election officials that will be beginning in November. So we are excited about this change. We are sharing information through our social media and our utility newsletters. We've been doing that for about a year, uh, before we get them. But we just wanted, I just wanted to bring that back up, so it's exciting, because it's getting a little closer.
Thank you. The one thing you didn't mention was that we've moved the decorations for Christmas up to start nearly immediately. That's one really exciting thing. It's City Hall. Ashley?
Can, can we call for impeachment of the mayor?
I love Christmas. It's Ashley's turn now.
Um, Ashley Colsette and Angie Brooks are heading to the Wisconsin Library Association Conference next week in Middleton. Um, I know both will bring back some amazing ideas for programs and services, so I'm excited to see what they learn there. Um, the Friends of Mountain Public Library book sale starts next Saturday and go, go throughout the whole month of November. So if you need to stock up your home libraries, please, um, shop our book sale, because all funds go towards supporting library programming, um, scholarships for graduating seniors and other fun library initiatives. And we are also undergoing a website design as well with our library website, so.
Thank you. All right, our team building exercise. I messaged everyone except for our attorney, I apologize, to warn you of tonight. Uh, what's? You guys are used to thinking on your feet, though. You'll be fine. So what is the worst childhood outfit your parents made you wear? Go.
I couldn't really think of an outfit, but I do remember fighting wearing a jacket, like tooth and nail. It could have been ten below and snowing, and I wasn't wearing a jacket or a coat.
I'm piggybacking on that, and mine was, though, no socks. I, I hate wearing socks. But we lived in the country in Minnesota, so there was like ten-foot drifts, but I never went with socks or boots, just shoes.
And that's why they call her eight-toe.
I don't recall this, but I have seen picture proof that at one point in my first year on this earth, I was in a sailor suit.
I don't think it's a specific outfit, but just all the denim, growing up in the nineties, it felt like everything was denim. Denim all the time and looking back at pictures.
I actually brought photo evidence of this. Um, first, when you sent it, I thought of having costumes, and this is my sister and I. Dressed up as witch, it must've been super, super cold, because we have all of our puffy coats under our witch costumes. And there's like doilies and ha, it's all handmade. Mom did great. Um, but as you see, this is me. I'm super thrilled, so. Yeah, sure, yeah.
Well, my mother, Jackie Lee, was the lady of fashion, and I remember being forced to wear it to church one Sunday. A powder blue leisure suit with white, I'm not done, with the white thread for the, the trim, the piping around it, with a, the open collared, wide collared shirt that's polyester with palm trees on it, and platform shoes and a white faux patent leather belt. Yeah, beat that. That was...
and platform shoes and a white faux pattern leather belt. Yeah, beat that. That was horrible. She made me wear it. Nope. That's why I liked the seventies.
I guess I would go with pretty much any time we had to go do J C Penney family pictures. Yeah, like one jumps out at me. I remember having to wear brown corduroy pants and I was like, what are these? Like I have no idea what these are, but yeah, anytime we did that, it was a disaster.
Oh, you just brought me back. I forgot about, I tried to erase all those J C Penney memories. We have one in our two thousand one Old Navy flag shirts, all gray. That was pretty brutal. But otherwise, my mom was a very stylish woman, is a stylish woman. But there was this outfit I wore in first grade and I still remember it. It was the stirrup leggings with like a bright orange oversized sweatshirt. I looked like I worked at Fleet Farm. Still haven't forgiven her for that.
Okay, I can go. So my cousin is about nine months older than me and when I was little until I was probably about three, I was completely bald. And so my older cousin would give my mom, I got the hand-me-downs. And so looking back, I really hated like all of the Charlie Brown looking sweaters and blue corduroy pants and everything that I wore because there was no dresses or anything. It was all the hand-me-downs from my cousin Justin, so, yeah.
All right, I'll go. Because I think it was like second or third grade, my uncle was getting married and my ma had the brilliant idea of giving me a perm. So I had this like perm like mullet thing going on. And I have photos. And my dad was, my dad had no idea. And then when he saw me, it was like two days later, he shaved my head and my ma was so mad. But I had a perm.
You're up. All right, I can go. Well, this is going way back, isn't it? You know, as opposed to growing up in the nineties. Well, I would probably say being, being probably four or five years old and being required to wear a suit and tie. That was terrible. I was never going to do that again. So I had like this baby blue, not a jumpsuit, but it was matching sweatshirt and pants. And I don't think it'd be terrible if I was like three or four when I wore it, but it was like middle school. And I don't know why, this is when all the kids were looking cool and tight-rolling their stuff and I was not like that was like the definitive, like moving to nerd ship like happened then, so. And I still keep finding pictures as much as I try to destroy them. I don't know how many pictures they took of me wearing that stupid thing, but baby blue jumpsuit. You, sir? All right. Thanks, everybody. That was fun. So setting next meeting date, instead of just calling out our next date, we're going to set the next meeting date for a special council meeting. After creating the ad hoc committee with a limited number of people, I got messages from everybody up here that you wanted to be included. And with some trouble with scheduling and whatnot, we've decided just to have a full council for a special meeting. And I'd really like to find a date that we can all be present because I think I've heard a lot of positive, good feedback, good ideas come from this. So I don't want to cut people out because I think that there's great ideas. So it could be earlier. It could be, I like this, three thirty if it works earlier, not so much. I have four. I got a weird look from Molly, so. But you guys get to pick. It doesn't have to be in the evening. It can be whatever you think. If we want to throw out some days, let's see. Yeah, Ryan, so Ryan's saying that the twenty-seventh and the third are the best days. He's free in the evening on those two days.
I can't do the third, but I can do the twenty-seventh.
What time?
Those would be evening. Is your mic on?
Some of the people here are trying to close up shop and leave that work and get here, so sometimes I think three thirty is going to be a little prohibitive.
Sure.
If I have enough time, I can make anything work, but a lot of us aren't that fortunate. Yeah, for me, school pickup and all that, so four, I could do four. Three thirty would be tough, so I'm good. Twenty-seventh at four would work.
Twenty-seventh at four would work for me.
That would not work for me.
Yes, Ryan thinks he might be able to make the twenty-eighth.
I mean, I could do five o'clock on the twenty-seventh.
Well, I personally, I can make five work if everybody else can. If we, I mean, we do this at six, so.
At three thirty, so truthfully, five's fine, whatever. Just saying, it doesn't need to be six. It can be earlier. So what's five o'clock look like for everyone on the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I'm good. I could. Not ideal, but I could.
Good, good. Do we need a motion to set that date or can I just say we're setting that date, Paul?
I think the attorney is going to answer that right now.
Yes, since it's not a scheduled date, you should do that by motion. Very good. Okay. I'd entertain a motion for that date then.
I make a motion to schedule a special council meeting for October twenty-seventh at five P M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries and we have our next meeting date. I would entertain another motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.